Meeting of our regularly scheduled December Board of Education meeting. It's December 12, 2020, and we are at the Argen Education Center. Do you have any additions or corrections?
Yes, ma'am, I have one. I'd like to make our board members aware of the Closure J, Closure J in the action item. There's a one small correction, and that is the hearing will be scheduled for January 4th. The new year 2023, in your packet in your closures, it says January the 5th. So it's just a small correction for a date.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, having heard that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda made by Ms. Hundley, seconded by Mr. Kehoe, all those in favor, and that's 5-0. I am going to ask, oh, I'd love to ask Ms. Laurie, when I'm not home to you, she's lost her voice. Jacqueline, will you lead us into the eligible agents, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, unour, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Jacqueline, and everybody. Superintendent, let's roll right into our instructional session, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to invite Dr. Smith to come forward and share with you the comprehensive district improvement plan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Great. A month ago, we got to talk a little bit about our levels of proficiency across our system, and lots of different stakeholders have participated in the crafting of our district improvement plan. The slides that I shared with you are just some highlights of the goals that we've set and some of the activities that we'll focus on. And in the plan, which you all have a copy of, and that'll be posted on our website, you can see the actual individual goals year by year and go from there.
Excellent.
Are you ready?
We might be.
And we have it up here, and it's also on your screen.
Yes, so we can proceed, Ms. Smith and Dr. Smith.
Yep, all right. So in the first section, what you'll notice is the seven goals that are outlined by KDE for the 2022-23 school year. There's a couple of things that have shifted from previous years. For example, goals number four and five, we now have an English learner progress goal and also a quality of school climate and safety goal. We've moved away from a transition readiness goal, and we now have a post-secondary readiness goal, and then our graduation rate. So if you go to the next page, you'll see it says the measure of student proficiency. Every time we reference proficiency scores, we're talking about the Kentucky Summit of Assessment as the measure which we are... Oh, there we go.
Are you still trying to get this?
I'm not sure. I know one controller. Okay. All right, so let's first go to goal number one. This is where we settle over ourselves around proficiency in reading and math. And as you saw in my presentation last month, in the spring of 2022, elementary, middle, and high school, we were at about 58% in elementary for proficiency in reading, 56% in middle school, and 61% in high school. As a team in teaching and learning, we set the goal by the spring of 2027 to be at 80% proficiency across each of our levels. And if we go one slide forward and we look at our math data, we were at 58% proficiency for elementary, 58 in middle, and 57 in high school, and we set the same goal of 80% proficiency over the next five years through the spring of 2027. To reach those goals, I identified the three highlights from our activities in the CDE document. First is our PLC work. In the spring and summer of the last year, we spent a considerable amount of time and energy with teachers and their PLC teams, looking at standards, building scope and sequence documents, and really working to meet the needs of students. We want to continue that work forward, but also give PLCs time to be more flexible in how they meet the needs of the kids in their classroom, understanding that kids are coming to us with lots of different needs. In terms of instructional framework, we currently use the Danielson model to support teachers in the classroom, and we're working now to link what we see in classroom observations and evaluation to that model. So we're focusing on the instructional framework of the Danielson model to support and build common language and describe teaching practices. And in the last section around data analysis, we are very data-rich, and we're working now to help teachers unpack all these different data sources and use those data to take action to support student learning. Those are our three areas to focus for reading and math. If we look next for goal number two around science, social studies, and writing, one shift is that we've added social studies as one of our focus areas. And if you take a look first at science, as I mentioned a month ago, we struggled with some of our scores in science in the spring of 2022. 38% for elementary school students, 37% in middle school, and 21% in high school. High school stood out also because in 2021, we were at 41% proficiency. So a 20-point drop is extremely concerning. When I went back and looked at our average ACT score, what was also interesting is that in science, our average ACT score was a 20.9 compared to the state average of 18.3, which makes me feel like the 21% here feels like an outlier that may or may not be a great representation.
And it begs the question, was the same tool used our near year?
That's a very good question. I'll talk a little bit about how we want to address science when we get to the activity section, but we have set a goal across all of our levels to be at 60% proficiency by 2027, but our goal is to accelerate that faster. 60% is a little bar for us. We are setting that goal, but we want to exceed that by 2027. If you look at social studies, we were at 50% proficiency for elementary school, 54% for middle school, and 48% for high school, and we set a goal overall for social studies to be at 65% proficiency. And then for writing, in the spring of '22, we were at 52% for elementary school, 54% for middle school, and 53% for high school. This is another case where in 2021, elementary school was at 67%, middle school 72%, and high school 73%. So to see a drop of 15 to 20 points in a single year was very surprising, and it also felt like either that was a very high performance year for us, and the prompt was really, we were really good at the prompt that was offered, or else our scores were resettled. So we set an overall goal of 75% by 2027. If you go to the... And I'm actually unable to advance these slides. If you go to the three activities that we're going to focus on for science, social studies, and writing, our first area is to look at formative assessments. We want to make sure that PLCs have the tools that they need to accurately measure these performance in science, social studies, and writing. Our elementary schools right now are beginning a pilot, looking at a science curriculum resource. They're going to pilot that in January and February, and based on the feedback from teachers, we're hoping to adopt a science curriculum next year to help get the tools in the hands of teachers to teach our science curriculum to our students in a way that helps them increase their levels of proficiency and understanding. In terms of professional learning, we are focusing on how to train and support teachers and using our scoring rubrics with our writing plan, and also to score formative assessments in social studies. And then aligned to our PLC work, the component around standard alignment is ask PLCs to bring examples of student work to their PLCs and identify exemplars, so we can see what high, medium, and low-quality work looks like, and support our newest teachers. We have a number of teachers that are either new to the profession or certified for alternative means, and we want to make sure that they have tools to look and analyze student work. All right, if I go now to goal number three, this is for our achievement gap area. Our focus area in the coming year is around student support in special education. We know with a few of our schools in TSI status that a laser-like focus on supporting students and teachers in special education is what we need to work on in the coming, over the coming five years. A novice reduction goal takes the total number of students that are in the novice range, which is what you see for a spring of '22. So in elementary school, 43% of elementary school students, 50% of middle, and 45% of high school students in a combined reading and math area, and we're trying to cut those scores in half over the next five years, so to get to 21, 25, and 22% novice, shrink the number of students that are novice. If we go one slide further, we do the same activity for science, social studies, and combined writing. And so you can see elementary is at 34%, middle 50%, and high school 59%. We're trying to cut those numbers in half over the next five years. We've started some work to support teachers and co-teachers in the last summer and also this fall through our admin staff meetings. We're focusing very, very intentionally on co-teaching and the co-teaching models that we're using. Ms. Whitaker presented last month on some of the work that we've done with principals and coaches so far. Specifically, we're looking at ongoing job embedded professional learnings related to reading and math. We're also ensuring in master schedules that teachers have sufficient co-planning time so that they're working together to plan the lessons that they're then co-teaching. Sometimes an ECS teacher can be stretched between the classrooms that they're supporting. We want to make sure that in the master schedule, we put in co-planning time as a priority. And then we are also focusing very carefully on the least restrictive environment for students, making sure that they have as much time as possible with similar peers in the core classroom. For goal number four, this is a new area for us, and we have an EL progress goal. You can see the numbers, the scores that we got in the spring of '22, and the goals that we've set as a team to the spring of 2027. Thank you, thank you, Jen. And you can see sort of the medium level of performance in the spring and the level of high or very high that we've set for the spring of 2027. And our focus for supporting EL students is broadly around professional learning, but it's in the three areas that you see bulleted. We want to help teachers understand how students learn a second language if English is not their first language. We want to make sure that English language proficiency standards are folded into the work that we're doing in classrooms around learning targets, and then also making sure that teachers can adjust their instruction based on proficiency levels, and that gets back to using data, analyzing data, taking action on data. To go to goal number five, this is around the feedback that we got from students on the KSA around their school climate and safety. We had a number of questions that we looked at as a team, and each of our principals have selected an area that they wanted to focus. As a system, this question, number 26, stood out to us, and it was a statement that students agreed or disagreed with, and the statement was, "I feel I am part of my school." When we looked across elementary, middle, and high school, 85% of students agreed or strongly agree with that statement. And while 85% is a strong number, we felt that 95% was a goal we wanted to set for our school district, that we want students overall to feel like they belong at school and that they're part of their school community. And so we have three ways that we wanted to focus on that. First, in terms of supporting teachers in their homerooms, some of the curricular resources like Purposeful People and Character Strong, we want to make sure that teachers have the training and support they need to meet the needs of the kids that are in their classroom, especially students that are feeling disconnected from school. We know that counselors are doing a lot of work every day face-to-face with students. We want to make sure that they have the support that they need in terms of training and also evidence-based practices to meet the needs of their students. And then MTSS team came up with five focus areas around core development for students, which are the things that you see listed there: self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, self-management, and responsible decision-making. And we felt that those focus areas could help drive some of the work we were doing with our teachers and with our counselors to help feel students, to help students feel like they're part of their school community. If you go to goal number six around post-secondary readiness, we were very fortunate to have 85% of students that are graduating post-secondary ready. That's either prepared to go to college or completing a CTE pathway, but we also feel that we could push those scores or that number of students further. And so we set a goal of 90% of students by 2027. Some of the things that we're doing to meet these needs, first, at the middle school level, we see an opportunity to help students connect their interests to career pathways. We don't currently have a really clean screening tool that lets kids take an assessment or a survey and then see the kind of career that they might be interested in. So we're going to make a resource like this available at the middle school level so students can see what their natural interests and aptitudes, the kind of career that that might point them towards. We're expanding the number of CTE pathways that we're offering at the building level at each of our high schools. And at a time, sometime after winter break, when we're a little further along our work group, we'll be able to present to you on some of the work that they've done around career pathways and what we'll be offering in the coming year and what we'll be offering over the next three years. And then we also have been very intentional in surveying students to understand what kinds of CTE pathways they would like to focus on, and so that student interest survey for high schools, for middle and high school students will continue, and we'll use those data to help craft the pathways that we offer. And just goal number seven, our last area on the graduation rate. We grew in the 2021 school year from 96.9% of students graduating to 97.3 in 2022, and we want to try and reach 98.5% of students by 2027. And you can see just the two things that we referenced for graduation, which is making sure we have the right counseling and support to keep kids on track for graduation, and then also that we have pathways and engage students in coming to school and getting the most out of their high school education. I know I said a lot right there. I talked very fast. I dealt with many questions that we had.
It's a great report. Ms. Hundley.
Dylan, could you tell us on the goal seven, we're talking about our graduation rate?
Yep.
Do you know what the rate is for what JCPS has and what the state of Kentucky is?
State of Kentucky, I believe, is at 90%. I don't know JCPS, but I'll find it out for you, and I'll let you know.
Yeah, I would love to know that.
I have the same question. And nationally, do we now have that ranked?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't. I wrote down, actually, 90.2% is Kentucky. We were, and this is in 2021, and we were at 96.9. We grew .4 to 97. I will find that out because I think that is a really interesting data point for us to be careful of.
And you had a second part to your question, Ms. Smith.
I did. On the goal five, on "I feel I am part of my school," did you see, I know you kind of lumped them all together with 85%.
Yes.
Was there a higher, what were the numbers for like elementary, middle, and high?
Of course, I printed it on 11-by-17 paper to have you read. Goal five. Okay, for elementary school, our one-year goal, so elementary school came in in 2022 at 90.6, and so their goal is to grow to 91.5 next year. Middle school came at 86.4, and their goal is to grow to 88.1 next year. High school came in at 78.3, and their goal is 81.6 next year. And when you're looking at this document, those are listed right here, so you can look back to them if you'd like to.
I'm going to add to Ms. Hundley's question. Have our schools been made aware of the data?
They have. Each school set their own goal for goal area number five.
Yes.
There are a whole range of questions, and I would be happy to share with you the district-level scores across the questions. I was very pleased to see 90-plus% for elementary and middle school students saying that adult cares about them. They had really high marks in a number of areas. Some students also said things like cyberbullying is a problem. Now, cyberbullying is a big issue that also extends outside of school. It extends to every cell phone that every student carries with them, and in social media spaces, that can become a real issue. That is a challenge that we may want to take on as a school district, but also can be addressed at the building level. And so our principals of each selected those goals, and they can tell you about them at their SBDM reports. Goal five will apply at every school. And so today, each principal received a template for their SBDM presentations, and I think that they would be ready to talk with you about the goals that they set.
Thank you, and if you'll share that data with us, that would be excellent. It's a great report. Other questions? Mr. Kehoe.
Dr. Smith, you mentioned tools in this presentation.
Yeah.
In mathematics, what kind of tools are you looking for there?
So right now, we are in year two of our Bridges math curriculum, and what I found has been really successful over the last two years with our, actually with both of, with all of our elementary schools, is giving teachers time to get together and unpack units, really understand the potential challenges that a student could face in a given unit, and work collaboratively with other teachers to plan how they would address and anticipate those needs. We saw a really strong growth in our math curriculum in middle school also. We offered a similar level of support. We've had a math coach that has, we've had two elementary math coaches and one middle school math coach that have done incredible work over the last two years. Those were ESR-funded positions. Those positions are going to sunset at the end of this year, and so what we want to make sure is present starting next year is that we have, we have built capacity with teacher leaders, coaches, and principals so that they can help move that one forward once our ESR funds sunset as they're supposed to. So those would be some of the tools. When we think of data and how we look at data, our elementary schools have been using a data platform to unpack standards and really dive in and look at student attributes. They look at those data in PLCs. Principals are looking at those reports. I'm looking at them with principals when I meet with them. So we're just trying to give everyone the tools that they need to look at data and take action on data. That's, that would be my first, my first motion.
The reason I stick on mathematics is driving here tonight. I came across a blue board, and it said, "How in Latin?" No proverbs here, and just pencils and paper. It kind of makes me think, is getting back to the basics, especially mathematics, where it's homework, it's repetitive, you know, processes.
So I don't think that there are any shortcuts in education. I think that it is what you're describing, which is intentionally focused work in the classroom. I think that you can supplement in a lot of different ways, but at the end of the day, what you're seeing is a relationship with a teacher who has the tools they need to teach their content area, students who are present and engaged. That is where you're going to have a very special magic happen in the classroom, and kids are going to learn at high levels. That's where we're going to see our numbers, like they're part of my school community increase. When I share those scores with you, you'll see that we have very specific places where kids feel like teachers know me and care about me, and that's the foundation for high levels of achievement.
Thank you, Mr. Kehoe. Are there other questions? Mr. Dennis.
You brought up ESR-funded staff.
Yes.
How many are going to sunset at the end of the year?
27, about 20, between 25 and 27.
All right. My question to you was concerning goal three with the ECS students.
Yes.
What does the law state how much time they should spend in the classroom with their peers?
So the way that the law is structured is it is written into their IEP that they are in the least restrictive environment for the most time that they can be during the school day. Many of our kids, that's 80% or more of the day, they're in their core classroom, 20% receiving additional support, either in the core classroom through specially-designed instruction or through resource or other spaces.
You mean regular classroom?
Yes. I mean, in elementary, it could be in the same space. Secondary, it might be, it might be like the co-teacher coming in to support. It just depends on the level and the level of need for the student.
And each student varies.
And each IEP is written to the needs of that student. So we could, we could share, for example, a percentage of kids that are at 80% or more in core, that would be in the least restrictive environment 80% of the time, but it really just depends on the student's individual level.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I think Dr. Redford would like to weigh in too.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Just to add to that, it's also based upon the admissions and release committee, or ARC, evaluating progress aligned to their IEP. Those decisions are made by a group of educators as required by ARC IDA requirements.
Excellent. I have a question, Dr. Smith. When we talk about post-secondary ready, that says to me that when kids move out of high school, they can, they can reflect on whether or not they were ready. But this question, I think, is posed to our students while they are still our students.
So what, what the KSA would tell us, and I can share these scores also because they'll chop it up by gender, by all kinds of... Actually, have they graduated college? Have they met all the requirements to be ready to go to college? Or for students that might not want to go on the college route, have they taken the courses they need to be career-wise? They look at all of those, those possible pathways and then come together and give you a total overall score. One of the things that our work group around CTE pathways has looked at, and what we're trying really hard to understand, is we have many students that take AP, JCTC courses, college courses, that are ready for college, that they're, they're absolute trajectory. There are some students that take CTE courses based on what we offer now, so career or technical aid, but we set a subgroup of kids in the middle that might not find either of those to be just what they want. And so under Dr. Redford's leadership, we surveyed all of the students and asked our high school students, what, what are you interested in? If you were to rank your top CTE course pathways, which ones would you want? And then we looked at those scores compared to what we currently offer. And our, all of our high school principals, as well as Mr. Hunzaker at the middle school level, and a few others, we sat and we looked at those data, we looked at what we offer in our high schools, and we've said, knowing what students want, are there any things that we would want to change differently so that a child that's not finding what they're looking for now could get their needs met? An example would be something that Mrs. Wusley is doing at South Hyatt, looking at the welding program, right? We have kids who would love to pursue a career in welding. We don't offer welding right now. When we were just, we took a trip to Scott County, and we visited Elkhorn Crossing and Ridge Crossing High School, and we met the welding teacher at the high school, and we were talking, and he said, "Yeah, the year before I became a welding teacher, I made $213,000 that year. And then I became a teacher, and I made $35,000." And his friends all said, "Huh, that is an interesting career move for you." But he said, "I love working with kids. I have a welding company. I still do just fine financially, but I love working with students." And he met this group of kids that he's moving through there, 20 welding bays, and we all saw that, and we thought, we have kids who want to do the same thing here in Scott County, we just don't have that opportunity yet. And so for us, here's some funding mechanisms and other things, we're going to make those opportunities available to students also.
Excellent. Other questions, board members? I think that all of those things are wonderful and admirable, and it is important, well, it's critical to the work you all do to know that information, that data about our students. The question I have always posed, and we can't seem to get the data, is what are our Olden County students doing after they graduate? And we kind of know, and where's Beth? Beth will testify whenever we hear from the alternative schools. She has smaller numbers, and she can report back to us and track down what her students are doing that year after they graduate. But it would be so interesting to know that because I know that based on those requirements, we think our students are ready, and I guess that's, that's all we can do right now.
Short of calling them, right against them?
Yes.
There's no need to...
I know, thank you, Superintendent.
I'd just like to make one note. If you've seen in some, this is state test data from last spring that was released, just a quick note that you might have seen, you know, our, our districts and other districts, we've had a lot to celebrate. We also have a lot to work on, as Dr. Smith has alluded to. I would also just share that, you know, from a, we're doing well as a district compared to other districts in Kentucky, but we also have work to do because we want to be the very best when thinking about world-class. I've seen some information shared about the mixed results of those kinds of things, certainly we, all of us all know where their strengths are, where our opportunities are to improve, and we're working diligently to move that needle forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the report, Dr. Smith. We're ready, Superintendent, for the treasures report. You're going to have to proceed, Ms. Anderson. We have the report before us, and I think Mr. Watkins is working on technology. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. This afternoon, we are looking at the activities for the month of November. In our first section here, we have our cash accounts and consolidation. We began the month with $21.9 million. And our any balance is $68.9 million. This is our primary month to receive our property tax income in the real estate. So you can see our receipts are exceeding our discretionary debt forward amount. As we go down a little farther, you can see our bonded construction funds, that is the same type of activity that we've seen for the last several months. In the last section, we have our investment funds. On top of the page, we have our cash accounts by each of our funds. As you can see, our construction fund is made. As we progress through the Fiji process, and this month here, getting a number of things to sign off on, we will be able to start moving several convoys, so that, that adjusts the numbers a little bit, so we're not seeing the full benefit of that. that adjusts the numbers a little bit, so we're not seeing the full benefit of having these open positions. If we were to summarize the salary piece plus employee benefits, we're seeing a 3% increase in the benefits and the combined number of salary plus benefits at 1.8%. So obviously, the salaries are much higher, but we're not seeing the full benefit of having the number of open positions. So then what I'd like to do is pick over to page 37, where our totals are. And we have kind of an interesting here. If we look at these, these total numbers at the bottom, the very last numbers, the 29.9 million for fiscal 20, and 30.1, 30.8, 32.4, we're seeing a fairly large increases in those numbers, 254,000 for that first set of numbers, 653,000 for the second set of numbers, and going into this year, we're looking at 1.6 million. So we've gone from less than 1% to 2% to 5%. And so this is a much smaller section of a percentage of the total cost compared to the numbers if you were to add salaries in. If we look at just this section without the salaries, we're looking at price hikes or cost hikes of 4.7%, 9%, and this year is almost 19%. So we are seeing the results of inflation plus a lot of spending that we're doing in other areas outside of salaries. Some of that is really just getting, getting things done, but it does come at a cost. If we go to the next page, we've got a summary of bond potential. That is my Jefferson's June. And five page on that, we have a balance sheet by plan. And then on page 34, we have our own statements that, and that includes the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Are there questions or comments, board members? Mr. Dennis.
Can you please bring me a co-sheet when we meet in January, to all the numbers on the pages?
So, I, I definitely can.
Thank you.
The descriptions that are there are the full descriptions. Are you looking for something a little different?
Just anything that has the numbers attached to it. I see all the numbers on the left-hand side, 00710, 00720.
So that description that goes with it explains what that expense is. So the O7s is capital assets.
All right.
So O732, your vehicles will have buses in there, will have.
O7 for operating vehicles.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. It kind of summarizes like things, so that you're not seeing the whole in total and not able to differentiate where we're spending the money.
All right.
So you can see as we progress through the different years, where our spending is changing.
That information is given to us, Mr. Dennis. Are there other questions for Ms. Anderson? Motion to approve treasurer's report, please, made by Mr. Kehoe, seconded by Mr. Dodson. All those in favor? And that's five oh. Bills and claims, please.
All right, bills and claims on page 112. So we have had a very quick turnaround since the last week, so our total number of invoices and total dollar amount are reduced compared to prior time period, but here's our list since we last met. And if you go to the final page, as you will see the individual invoices that we pay along with your instructions, our descriptions that go along with that. We're doing something a little bit differently with the visa this time. The invoices are coming, zip descriptions from the schools, so it should be less work as far as right now, thanks to supplemental writing. So that should be part of the bill to make it a little bit easier for you all to do. And that concludes your questions.
We appreciate your additional notes, as always. Are there questions regarding bills and claims? Motion to approve, please, made by Mr. Dodson and seconded by Mr. Kehoe. All those in favor? And that's five oh. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Board members, we have one set of minutes to approve, and those are the minutes from the regular board meeting on November 28th. Any corrections or additions? Motion to approve, please, made by Ms. Hugley and seconded by Mr. Kehoe. All those in favor? And that's five oh. Thank you all. And superintendent, we are ready for your notice to the Board of Personnel Action.
Yes, personnel actions as presented in your packet.
Questions or comments? Thank you, superintendent. I think we have some computers that are getting ready to go down on us. Mine too, Mr. Kehoe. Board members, we are ready for the consent agenda. Superintendent, what's your recommendations, sir?
Yes, recommend to approve.
Are there any questions regarding any of the items in the consent agenda?
Is this including Coach R.C.?
Yep.
All right. I have a question on the Obeck. Was, is this a bill that we're paying from the federal money or is it an upcoming bill for the $20,000, the 333?
Yes, that is, which I was, see.
It's under Coach R.C.'s.
Yes.
It's about the fifth one down.
So KD is awarding co-ops across the state of Kentucky dollars that co-ops are distributing to each school district to support teachers or emergency certified or those that want to pursue a degree or certification. So those monies are, yeah, those monies are going to support those, our employees who fit that, those requirements to further their education so that they become certified to teach. The issue is that we need probably more than $20,000 that Obeck is promoting, but that gives us an opportunity to be able to support our teachers that be, again, emergency certified as an example of what that would support.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions? So your recommendations, superintendent?
Yes, recommend to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda, please, made by Ms. Hugley, seconded by Mr. Kehoe. All those in favor? And that's five oh. We are ready, super, for superintendent report number one, sir.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to have Mr. Bohannon come forward and share a report on the preschool expansion and renovation.
Thanks, February 2020, we're working on the SLPG1 project application for addition, expansion, renovation to Olden County preschool. We shortly thereafter awarded that, the selection of our design percussion to that project in coordination, in conjunction with the Buckner Elementary School by addition, so that that work, being so closely related to be designed in a way that one project would not negatively affect the other one. So earlier, just now, actually, we all approved the project reconciliation for Buckner Elementary School, so we're in the closeout stages of that project. So we wanted to take this opportunity, and Ms. Caston enjoyed me, to present to you all tonight the, what we call the educational specification of the project. Basically, just a little document to kind of re-initiate the project, to get it back rolling again, and to kind of get, let the, let the board kind of see where the program is today and where we'd like to take it with this project, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon, and welcome, Ms. Caston.
You can wing it, Jessica.
So Brent, Brent and I met, I went with Denise, and, and just kind of started talking about kind of the needs of the future and what that possibly means for us, but hopefully as we get bigger and we can meet the needs of more students.
Can we get the highlights of people that are here?
Yes.
Jessica.
So we talked about the needs of our growing population and just hoping that we can continue to meet the needs of our kiddos as we continue to get bigger. So looking at the fact that we get 40 to 60 kids every single year, and we have to be, we have to open our doors to those kids that are eligible for the program. So that's what, one of the things that kind of makes us very different from any other school in the county, is that we have to be able to adapt to accept those kiddos. If they're eligible for our program, I have to take them.
Yes.
And so we kind of talked about how we can have room to expand, should that need be if we grow another, you know, 100 kids in the future. We are starting to see kiddos coming, parents feeling more comfortable to enroll their children as we come out of COVID. So that was one of the things we had discussed was how we could look into moving into that Buckner hallway and adapting those classrooms to meet preschool regulations, because obviously we need a bathroom in the classroom. We have to have a certain amount of square footage for, where did Brent go? We have to have a certain square footage for our children. There has to, so one of the things that preschool regulation says, it has to have, be a certain square footage per child, and I can't.
We have those figures, Jessica.
So that's something important we have to keep in mind, too, as we move forward. Also, Brent and I had discussed some different things that we need in regards to just the changing needs in our office. Our office currently is very tight for our staff, and, and so kind of looking at some security needs that really need to be updated in our office as well. So if you look at that reception area, it's pretty, pretty outdated there. We don't even, the receptionist desk doesn't even face the outside vestibule, and we talked about how that's, that can be a pretty big problem now when parents are coming in and we can't, we're having to look around a brick wall to be able to see our parents as they come in. Also, we talked about the need to, well, the hope to someday get back to having some full-day classrooms, which I know if you all remember, that was a big desire for some of our parents, was to be able to, at some point in time, get back to having some full-day classrooms for our students. It's not for every preschool student, but definitely could be for some of our kiddos who are, this is their last year with us before they go on to kindergarten. So that's the, the other piece to the need for the additional rooms. I'll stop talking and just let you ask questions if you have questions.
Another, one of the problematic things that have changed, obviously with staffing changes that have happened since this building was built, as we see with a lot of our practice, the need for additional offices always comes up. Having nurses in these buildings now gives us the ability to meet those needs, but it also gives us, presents an issue with where do you have a room for a nurse's office, where you can actually secure medications and stuff like that, and then also still have an area for sick children to be in as well. So some of those types of items are on the list as well. And then as you get a little bit further along in the specification, you start to see some of the architectural things that we know that the building needs to be addressed with, new roof being the, the big one on there. The LED light fixture replacement is something that we've been doing in a lot of schools to give, but specifically with this program, it gives them the ability to control not just the color temperature of the light, but also the amount of lighting those for different types of use during, during different parts of the day or for different students that are being served with that. And then just make appropriate technology, trace the top line, doing it in other schools. And then the, another big one would be the expansion of the geothermal field that currently serves the school to accommodate higher use. And working alongside that would be the new roof to be a much more efficient roof on there. So with those two engineer and architectural type elements working together, the built environment will be a lot, a lot more conducive to easier control. I would like to ask any question, the appropriate person?
Let me ask board members if they have any questions. Mr. Kehoe?
So we're expanding the geothermal field, is there a way to pipe that up to the high school or the middle school, if I can?
Well, this would just be for the, the preschool itself has its own geothermal field, and basically it would just be adding another weller, three, to the, that's in the apartment that serves that building. The Buckner addition that was put on to, that was put on that has its own geothermal field to the east of that addition, so this goes, it specifically serves this building and this portion of the building.
Other questions, board members? I'm surprised we haven't had this conversation sooner, because I know we have touch base with you every year during the site face council report especially about space, et cetera, Ms. Caston. So thank you very much for moving forward. Denise, thank you for your help with this work. I'm looking over the list of concerns. I don't know how you increase the size of the current classrooms. That's my first question. And the second question is, will we be gaining any additional classrooms? And it's probably here, and I don't see it.
Well, when we come back to you with the schematics, and hopefully addresses most of these concerns, and we'll be able to look at what we can put together to address both these as in shape of.
So those are needs. You guys have already established. Any other questions? We readily acknowledge how critical this preschool is to what we do in Olden County schools, and we thank you for your leadership there, Ms. Caston. Board members, if you want a happy place to go, you need to visit the preschool. It's, it's just a great environment for learning and teaching. Superintendent, anything to add, sir?
No, ma'am. Just appreciate the work on this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Bohannon? Superintendent Report number two.
Yes, that's key, Mr. Bohannon.
That's why you were leading.
About to propose district facility plan.
Wow, this was a lot of work.
Yes, ma'am. It's been a long process coming, but we're happy to present to you all as part of your packet, the recommended first draft of the district facility plan from the local planning committee. And just kind of a quick reminder of what the, what the purpose of, of the district facility plan is and what the, what the LPC was charged with creating. It's basically a list of what are the needs for the district that is used by the Kentucky Department of Education to, to allocate resources to meet those needs. This isn't a comprehensive list of every single thing that needs to be done, but it does have some, some major projects and potential projects for us to be looking at as we move forward. And reminder, this is a four-year plan, so it's split up by biennial, so in the two-year, the second two years of the project.
Yes.
I mean, of the plan.
Yes.
The district, the classifications of it are roping down there for you, so if you have any questions about that. Reminder that the, other than split up by the biennial, those are, the Department of Education calls them priorities, but it's basic classifications. Different types of projects receive different types of classifications. So whereas you may see, for example, priority one C is a major renovation, where priority one A would be a new construction. Priority one, or two C would be a major renovation in the second biennial, where priority one A would be a new construction in the second biennial. Once you get to priorities three, four, and five, those are different types of projects, with three being non-instructional type additions and expansions, cafeterias, administrative areas, kitchens, that sort of thing. Priority four would be management support facilities, this would be your central office, annex, busker, huddens, crown shelves, those types of projects. And priority five would be your discretionary construction projects. Department of Education requires that all non-instructional extracurricular activities are categorized in priority five. Any questions about that for our movement?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to hit the highlights on this, since you all had a chance to review this. This document will also be available on our website after, if the board agrees with the decision.
Thank you.
And then also be available at various locations around the county.
Thank you.
For review. Priority one would be new construction projects, on the first page of the document, would be the replacement schools, for replacement for the Buckner Alternative Path School, N E L program, replacement of Orange Elementary School, and a replacement for the Creative and Performing Arts Center. Priority two Cs, again, two, or two A, I'm sorry, would be, again, second biennial projects. These are projects that aren't on our current needs, but would, we have a, our enrollment These are projects that aren't on our current needs, but would, we have a, our enrollment projections support the need for this in the future. So New Brownsville Elementary School and a New Brownsville Middle School. And then priority one C would be the continuation of the South Oldham High School renovations that we've got underway now, additional renovations to North Middle School. And then we went ahead and included the preschool that we just discussed as priority one D, since that project has not officially kicked off as far as construction goes, we want to go ahead and make sure that that's in the plan for when it comes time to fund that project. Additionally on the list, you'll see items such as one E for each of the middle schools, which is a very long-winded way of saying adding vape detectors to restrooms. This is a district-wide project that we kind of initiated this year with the high schools and the middle schools have requested that type of support as well. So each of those are listed on there as well. And I'll pause there, any questions before we keep moving on?
Questions, board members? Thank you, Mr. Bohannon.
Okay, and then category two C, we see major renovations and additions to educational facilities. This would be kind of where, these are broken down also as KDU has requested by kind of the under 30 and over 30 category. To warrant a replacement or major renovation, the facility is required to be 30 years of age or greater. Certain parts of the building aren't required to meet that, things that update quicker, things that go out of, become obsolete quicker such as HVAC mechanical equipment, roofs, that those types of things are not subject to the third rule. So you'll see things on there such as, you know, a roof replacement at Centerfield Elementary School, although we renovated Centerfield and within the last 10 years, we did not replace the roof, so they were still falls back to the categorized as for when it was installed. Also similar to Kenwood Elementary School, it being an under 30 year school building, but the roof is over 15 years and is subject to replacement as well.
Mr. Bohannon, can you touch on the second biennial, under two C for Alden County High School?
Yes.
The details are outlined in the draft district facility plan, but can you just briefly touch on what these pertain with that items, that would pertain to?
Yeah, so we've had major renovations at Alden County High School kind of periodically, every seven to 10 years or so, but the, these would include the areas of the 66 Core and the 84 Wing that comes out towards 393. Improvements to that would include replacement science labs, interior renovation of the restrooms, pretty much the interior finishes of building one, gym floor, locker room renovations, renovations to lower level classrooms and that daycare area. We had also had some discussions, as Mr. Kehoe spoke about at the last, at the last board meeting about replacement for the agricultural building and the greenhouse area and what that might look like moving forward with their, their expansion of their CTE programs as well. Window replacements in that building? A little bit overdue for that, and again, LED light replacement, what you're doing, the interior finishes, I would always recommend that we go ahead and make that investment for both the energy savings and also the ability to control the lights a little bit more specific.
I appreciate your question, Superintendent, and I want to thank Board Member Kehoe for advocating for Olden County High School loud and strong.
While we're on that subject.
It's a start.
While we're on the subject, another line item on that, for example, that's listed on, I don't know, eight there, KDU has asked that we break up certain parts of district-wide projects and assign them to individual locations, abilities. So some major campus driveway improvements and roadway work, we've assigned kind of with the, they asked that we assign it to the highest level school that it would serve. So improvements to kind of middle, Buckner, preschool, high school, Arvin, all are kind of categorized under this one here because we do have a priority two C project for that. So you'll see some road improvements listed on that list too.
Excellent.
Mr. Dinsdale, question?
Anything about sidewalks for OC campus?
The, I would categorize that inside work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the carousings, where you will see the projects such as the preschool and then the priority three or priority four projects, as we said earlier, those would be satellite facilities, administrative mannequins, bus garages. And then the priority five project would be anything that is under that 30 year mark that KDU would determine as discretionary projects, but we feel it is the important to meet. So everything up to priority four gives us that magic purple line there that sums up the district unmet need according to KDU's process we're here. As Mr. Dinsdale was talking about earlier, the numbers on the right-hand side are a formula that KDU produces, excuse my words carefully, produces to generate an equitable way of doing this across the state. So a dollar doesn't mean a dollar in that category, but it means the same amount in Olden County as it does in Pike County, as it does in Henry County. So that's how they use to evaluate our school districts in your form.
Yes. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any other questions?
Or anything else you'd like me to get on in the list?
Um.
I kind of got out of order a little bit there, so.
I didn't know if this concluded your report, Mr. Bohannon. Thank you. I'm going to take this opportunity again to thank Ms. Hundley for serving on the LPC. That's a major time commitment from a board member as well as Denise and Mr. Bohannon and anybody else. Who among our administrators served on LPC? Are you here? Oh, perfect. Thank you both, Mr. Martin and Mr. Wallace. Thank you. Yes, job well done. What? Superintendent, anything to add to this report?
Yes, just want to share with the board that as superintendent, I'm not a voting member of the LPC, but I did share with the board in terms, or LPC that I've shared with you all that this district facility plan, we wanted to support academics, the arts, and athletics from a facility perspective. This is not a programming perspective, but a facility perspective. And I also just want to just remind each of us in the board that these monies to support building, whether it's new or renovation, those monies are, cannot be used towards salaries, cannot be used towards instructional resources. We are maximizing our ability to be able to use some capital out there or building fund for purchase of buses, insurance, and technology. So we're really trying to be very judicious and supporting our, using our taxpayer dollars.
Thank you, Superintendent.
So as an action item listed in your agenda for tonight, what we'll be requesting is approval from the board to accept this draft of the facility plan. The next step will be taking this to a public hearing.
Yes.
And then also as part of your action tonight would be to select a hearing officer to conduct that public hearing.
Thank you very much.
That action later.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bohannon, for that summary. We are ready, Superintendent, for recognitions. And as we proceed to get ready for recognition, I'm going to ask everybody in the audience to join us in a moment of silence. We lost a student at Olden County High School. So not only do we have those families that were tragically impacted by the loss of that student, but our whole school community comes together to grieve for them. So we're just going to recognize that and take a moment of silence if you will. Thank you.
Statement I'd like to just kind of share with our audience and with our Board of Education. Tonight, we want to recognize Patrick Kehoe for his service to our students, staff, parents, and community of Olden County. Patrick has served as District Two Representative of Olden County Board of Education and we'd like to sincerely thank Mr. Kehoe for his advocacy and advocating for our students, staff, and wish him well in the future. Please give, please help me give a big round of applause for Mr. Kehoe. And I also would just like to say that it's really hard to say or express or even illustrate how much time, effort, energy that our board members put into preparing for meetings. I can say from the bottom of my heart that Mr. Kehoe and each of our board members, but Mr. Kehoe has really pushed for our district to be the very best. And that also means that he has pushed me as superintendent and also has pushed our board. And I'm sure that our board members could probably echo that along with Ms. Fletcher as our board chair, but Mr. Kehoe, I thank you, I appreciate your service, I appreciate you always nudging on me and thank you very much. Please help me give a round of applause.
I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I had a chance to tell Patrick this a few days ago, and that is while board members don't always agree, we always come together after decisions have been made. And the thing I know about Mr. Kehoe is he has a heart for kids. He's serving this district for the right reasons. He loves our students and he loves our public schools and I will always be grateful for that level of commitment. Thank you.
I just want to give a quick word of thank you everybody for supporting me and all the difficult decisions I've made over the years. Really enjoyed working with this group, the previous group, the previous superintendent, especially in the superintendent here, I think you've got one of the best in the state and I think you'll continue to move this district forward, I'm still going to note to regularly. Yeah, so it's not uncommon for me to call him, but I think we text at six o'clock this morning, about 3:00. So you'll continue to get my texts. That's right, thank you. One other board member I'd like to recognize, and that's Ms. Andrea Nykirk. She's unable to be here or not here this evening, but certainly want to also just recognize her and her service to our students, staff, parents, and community of Olden County. She has served as District Four Representative and certainly I'd like to just recognize her and take a moment to do so, and advocate for students and staff and wish her the very best in her future endeavors.
While Andrea didn't serve with this district for very long, she brought huge gifts to this district with her background as a public educator and also a school administrator. I can't say enough about the strengths that Andrea Nykirk brought to her service as a school board member. She too had a heart for students and for our administrators and for our entire community. So thank you for recognizing that and if you see Andrea, take the opportunity to thank her. Thank you. All right, we're going to roll on with public expression and the first person wishing to address the board is Eric Delon. Welcome.
Thank you, Victor, let me be here. I just want to start out and I say, I guess it's four years and probably the four years prior to that, I used to go have lunch with my son at this elementary school. I would show up the door, I'd show my ID, they'd buzz me in, go to the office, leave my ID, no big deal. I'd usually go sit out in the hall then and wait for his class to come by. And I would go with his class to the lunchroom. In the lunchroom, they actually had tables set aside for parents that wanted to have lunch with their kids. And most of the time I would go there, I'd be sitting there with my son and three or three of his friends would come over and have lunch with us. My son thought that was great, he really enjoyed it, I enjoyed it. And then I guess COVID hit, no one went anywhere for a couple of years. And then I guess two weeks ago, I went to have lunch with my granddaughter. Did the same thing, walked in, walked at the door, showed them my ID, they buzzed me in, went in, showed them my ID, and my granddaughter came in the office and they told us, well, you can sit here in the office or you can sit right out in the lobby, have lunch with your granddaughter. And it kind of puzzled me because, you know, unlike before, I used to be able to go in my child's environment and actually see how things go on. And now I can't do that. And I know my wife has called and talked to people about it because she also likes to go have lunch with her granddaughter. And, you know, we've been told several different things, starting out with, you know, we were told, well, it's, you know, the school's choice to decide whether that's it. We first talked to the school, they said, no, it's the board that decides that. And so, come to the board meeting and they're like, well, we don't have a policy on that. And then turn around, oh, well, we gotta, you know, go back and look at our policy on that, you know, more confusion. And, you know, just recently, you know, my wife talked to a principal and, you know, we were told, well, it's for the kid's safety. It's okay. Since when have parents become a safety issue in the schools? You know, we've always been parent volunteers before and I'd like to know what has changed? Because, you know, they say, oh, well, you always have access to your kids in your school and we're not seeing it. And, you know, we even offered to, you know, go, hey, we'll do a background check, you know, anything we need us to do and it doesn't seem good enough. And, you know, I'm not going to pinpoint any particular school, but, you know, calling around to the different elementary schools, a lot of them are like that, but there is, I know of at least one that does let parents go have lunch with their kids in the cafeteria. And I'm wondering why, you know, why aren't all the schools the same if we're in the same county, same school district? You know, shouldn't we, you know, go by the same standards? There are parents in one school district more, or one school district more dangerous than another? You know, and it gets aggravated, you know? It's making a lot of us feel like criminals, to be honest with you. You know, we have no problem going through background checks. You know, I know there's a school that recently had a luncheon for their teachers, which is a great thing, and they actually asked for parent volunteers that go through background checks and confidentiality training, which, that's no big deal to a lot of parents. I've been a foster parent for 22 years, I knew all about that stuff. So why can't we do the same thing and actually be able to go have lunch with our students, with our kids? And the kids enjoy it, the parents enjoy it, make a lot of great memories. You know, it's just, I don't know, something.
Thank you for sharing your concerns, Mr. Delon. Thank you. Teresa, you signed up to speak to. Teresa, you signed up to speak into.
Hi.
Hi.
It takes a lot from my husband to speak up, you know, he's a good guy, and it's really hard for him to have to sit on a bench with our granddaughter and eat lunch. It's really sad, actually. We make it, try to make it as fun as possible, but it's just sad. Of course, I did approach the principal about it because I wanted to do lunch the old-fashioned way before COVID, and I was trying to ask, what way can we safely do that again? And I was told that I can have contact with our child, but no contact with any other child. And I said, but we were doing it before, I don't remember all the words, but then a comment was made that I wanted access to all five hundred kids in the school. I didn't know all the kids ate lunch at the same time. I think they have separate lunchtimes. That's not what I wanted. I just wanted to keep something that we were doing before COVID going, that the kids enjoyed, the parents enjoyed. Didn't get anywhere, I was still eating lunch with my granddaughter on the bench, and we're making the best of it. Because it's very important I didn't have contact with any of the other kids. So here for us, this is from the newsletter. Uh, let's see. Talking about they need volunteers, parents guardian, you have to have the background check and confidentiality. They need two parent and guardian volunteers per classroom to supervise the students during the luncheon. And then on the other page, where you sign up to have so the staff can celebrate together and enjoy each other, which totally awesome, we have wonderful teachers. But my thing is, I was told and made to feel, be filled bad because I wanted to do something normal that we did before COVID. But then here, there's like twenty-three classrooms or so, and then the parents can go, I guess in the rooms, I don't know, but the volunteers stood outside the classrooms and watched the kids, because I was told I couldn't have access even in the lunchroom with paid staff members for twenty to twenty-five minutes. And then I find out about this luncheon, which is great. But now these parents have volunteered for this luncheon and got the access to the kids and were safe to do that? I wonder if they can now go and request to have a normal lunch with their kid? Or are they going to be told, no, you can't have access to any of the other kids? I just don't understand it. I'm not trying to make problems. I just want to keep the memories going, something we've lost so much. There's got to be a way, if they can be safely and volunteer in the kids' classrooms while the, all the teachers and stuff have lunch, great, then why can't we go and supervise because there's paid staff in the cafeteria, even at a visitor's table over there somewhere, and have lunch and keep, keep that going? I never was a parent that dropped my kid off at school and left them there. I was so involved, my kids are thirty now, involved with my kids. And I ate lunch with my grandkid and my daughter before COVID. I was never thought of as a bad person or having bad attention because I did that. I guess that's changed now. I, I don't mean to be a problem, I really don't. I, can we work something out? I mean, I'll do anything. I'll do a drug test, a background check, confidentiality. I mean, like my husband said, we were foster parents for twenty-two years, we got this. I'm not a horrible person. I, I love kids, I care about them. I just want to keep what we, something what we had before COVID.
Thank you, Teresa. I just want to say we appreciate your passion and your sincerity, and we hear you. Thank you. One more person wishing to address the board is Laura O'Brien.
Hello? Just had to lower it down a little bit, sorry. So I'm also here to talk about the lunch policy, visitor policy. As far as I know, we don't have one. I don't know if I'm incorrect on that, I couldn't find it online, we don't have one. So at the last meeting, you all had talked about implementing KSBA policies. And so I went to the KSBA website, and I realized that they actually have a bunch of policies. And it's gray hair, visitor policy. It's very simple. It just talks about how parents, guardians, grandparents and other immediate family members, as approved by the principal or designated me, may request to have lunch with their child or grandchild. Very simple. Well, then I started going through to see how many counties, districts, interstate allow it. There are at least a hundred and eighteen school, school districts in Kentucky that use this policy. A hundred and eighteen, including Shelby, Henry, Trimble and Jefferson County. Jefferson County doesn't even have SROs, and they allow parents to come in and have lunch with their kids. So I am asking that you implement a policy, it doesn't have to be exactly like this, you can reword it however you want, but we need one, and it's absolutely crazy that we don't have one. As I was perusing the KSBA website, I also found some other cool policies that I thought would be really helpful for you to implement. One would be a notification to request special meeting notification by email. This is in, founded in one of the other districts, so it's not like we don't have this here, but it would be really nice to have notification of when there's a special call meeting. Like, there's a lot of us that really enjoy coming, we really want to be involved, and we have no idea, like, we have to check your website constantly in order to know if there's a meeting. So if you were to implement this, right here, easy thing, here's my email, please sign me up, let me know so I can be here. Another thing that I had found was a request to place an item on the agenda. So if you implemented this, for example, I could fill it out and say, hey, I would like you to put the visitor policy on the agenda to talk about it. So I just think like, things, things such as this are simple ways for you to be transparent, to bring an engagement in the community, and to make us feel like we're all on the same team. To make us, I mean, a bridge in the gap, right? That's what we want, transparency. So implement these policies, since you said you're going to do it anyway, you're going to start looking into their policies to adopt them. I think that would be really helpful. I think it would be great if we could be engaged with the lunch policy and the parents can come and be actively involved in their childhood.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move along with our action items. Action item G, Superintendent?
Yes, consider approval of hardship early graduation requests.
Yes, questions or comments? Your recommendation, super.
Yes, recommend to approve?
Motion to approve, action item G, made by Ms. Hundley, seconded by Mr. Kehoe, all those in favor, and that's five oh. Action item H, sir?
Yes, consider approval of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Oldham County Schools Comprehensive District Improvement Plan.
This is something that we have seen a time or two. Are there additional questions or comments? Motion to approve based on your recommendation, sir?
Yes, recommend to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Dodson, seconded by Mr. Kehoe, all those in favor, and that's five oh. Action item I, sir?
Yes, consider approval of educational specifications for the Oldham County preschool expansion and renovation.
Yes. Jessica, are you going to do cartwheels? Questions or comments? Your recommendation, sir?
Yes, recommend to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Ms. Hundley, seconded by Mr. Kehoe, all those in favor, and that's five oh. Action item J, sir?
Yes, consider approval of draft district facility plan and selection of the public hearing officer.
You're going to do cartwheels? Questions or comments? Ms. Hundley?
I would like to recommend that Kevin Jeffries be the hearing officer because we do have to have somebody in that slot.
We do. I don't really know the protocol for this. Mr. Bohannon?
I spoke with Mr. Jeffries prior to this night meeting, he said he wanted me to do it, do so.
All right. All right, so your recommendation with the addition of Ms. Hundley's suggestion?
Yes, I, I recommend that we approve Mr. Jeffries to be the hearing officer for the LPC.
And approve that action item. Motion to approve, made by Mr. Dodson, and seconded by Ms. Hundley, all those in favor, and that's four. Those opposed, one. We have two information items, board members for your review, the monthly preschool report and the monthly energy report. And before we adjourn, I wish, to wish each of you an awesome holiday. Merry Christmas. I wish I had been here before Thanksgiving, but we met after Thanksgiving, to also tell you how thankful I am for this community and for the administrators who lead the business in our schools. So I thank you for that. I wish you, on behalf of this board, a Merry Christmas, happy holidays to those who celebrate the holiday in other ways. Your recommendation, Superintendent?
Recommend to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, made by Ms. Hundley.